I hereby call to order this committee of the whole meeting for Monday, September 11th, 2023. The time is 3:21. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Erin Stone.
Here.
John Caesaretti.
Here.
Anne Hart.
Here.
Bonnie Kim.
Here.
Allison Patless.
Here.
Amy Paley.
Here.
Lisa Schneider-Fabes.
Here.
I seek a motion to approve the minutes of the August 14th, 2023 Committee of the Whole Meeting and Executive Session.
Motion to approve the minutes of the August 14th, 2023 Committee of the Whole Meeting and Executive Session.
May I have a second?
Second.
Motion has been made and seconded. Board members, are there any comments, errors, or omissions to the minutes? All members in favor of approving the minutes say yea.
Yea.
Yea. Motion carries. We have no Facility Development Committee items, nor do we have school finance items. So we will move on to Strategy, which is Mrs. Schneider-Fabes. You should. You are special. Yes, we're all special.
I'm going to turn it over to Dr. Kromens-Gully to talk about this in the Strategic Planning Office.
Excellent. Thank you so much. Our District Strategic Advisory Team held its first meeting of the school year on Thursday, September 7. The meeting provided an opportunity of introductions for all team members. Remember that this is a stakeholder group, which includes parents and community members, as well as administrators, staff, and teacher representatives. And at the first meeting, we had several new team members, which we're always grateful for some new perspectives as we review our action steps. And so we did introductions, and we also received some feedback on our strategic plan action steps for this school year. So we are here this afternoon to share those proposals with all of you and receive any questions or feedback that you might have as we finalize our steps for presentation to the board at the upcoming Board of Education meeting. So we are going to walk through the presentation with some depth today and welcome any feedback or questions, whether you have them today or in the coming days, so that we can finalize that plan. We're really excited about the work that we're doing and the work that's ahead of us. I will allow Katie to give us an introduction, and I think, are you sharing from your screen?
Oh, okay. Yeah, I wasn't sure about that, but I will do that now. I'm just following your lead. I thought this was just me. Um, here we go. I'm using the slides that we used for the Strategic Advisory Team. I wanted to start with sharing the cycle that we've actually set through. I think that was really important context for our new members as well, to understand, you know, what has happened prior because they were new to the District Strategic Advisory Team. So at the end of the year, we provided an end-of-year progress update to the board, really going through all of our different goals and sharing with you our progress at the end of the year, and that was done in May. And then with those results, looking at our June All-Day Ad Council, or Administration Council Retreat in June, we went ahead and made some adjustments based on the results of that year to the action steps, really reflecting on how well did our actions that progressed our results. You know, what could we do to adjust? If there's areas of adjustment, what needs to continue? And so then, in June, we met with the same DSAT team for review and feedback, as well as at the start of the year with August, our All-Day Ad Council Retreat, the administrators reviewed those results as well, and made some suggestions and feedback and review. Then in September, with our new team assembled for 2324, the DSAT heard the background of our strategic planning process, and then we reviewed in smaller groups, each of the action steps, and with the goals, we received feedback, and now we are here for the Board of Education review and discussion, and then we will again. So, moving on, this slide you will be... I'll be there. I'm going to go through that really quickly because these are the same presentation slides as in DSAT. So this is the start of our organization, our one-page strategic plan with our goal of student achievement and growth and ensuring a differentiated education that provides a sound foundation of rigorous academic learning. We did talk about our KPI. Kristina, do I share this?
So there have been some new regulations around our early screening for dyslexia in the state of Illinois, and so we looked at our, we worked with the psychologists and reading specialists this summer to look at what the KPI, or the early literacy screeners that we were currently using for our kindergarten and first grade, first and second grade students. After reviewing the information that we were using and aligning it with what the new regulations were, we made some changes in what we're going to be doing for our kindergarten, first and second grade students. So this year is going to be a little bit different in terms of the early literacy screeners that we're going to use, which means that our KPI is going to change slightly for spring. We just need to see how it all works this fall as we sort of do some new measures with our younger kids that we think is, are going to give us better information about those students and help us identify students who may be at risk for dyslexia or other reading issues. We'll be keeping you up to date as to how the benchmarking goes in the fall and winter, and we will, with DSAT in February, I think it's a February meeting, finalize kind of what we believe the KPI should be with those changes in the early literacy screeners. Just to keep you all up to date on where we are.
So these were the action steps that we presented as a final draft. Actually, the paper copy that you have, or the one that was uploaded, has some of the adjustments on here that is not reflected on the screen. So what I think, if that's okay, what I'm going to do is switch over to this document that is reflective of what you have in front of you. So with our goals and strategies and our 2324 action steps, none of the key performance indicators changed, the strategies did not change. Some of the updates for the action steps would be the ones that you see, the six that you see in front of you. Building MTSS teams will analyze student data after each benchmark period. We wanted to identify MAP and AIMS Web Plus. We received feedback from DSAT about, you know, what about the classroom indicators? And so we added the classroom performance language and identified students who require tier-three services, intervention, or enrichment in either reading or MAP. Then for the second action step, it would be building MTSS teams will track the progress of students receiving tier-three services for intervention and note those who require lesser-intensive services by next benchmark or end of the year. The third one is building MTSS teams will be provided ongoing training and support throughout the year. And fourth, special education staff, LBSs, will be trained in research-based reading and MAP resources strategies to increase the efficacy of instruction for students with disabilities, for example, the people of Billingham or number one, etc. And then general education staff will continue to engage in professional learning about research-based reading and MAP tier-one instruction, social intervention, including MAP support and enrichment, reading intervention, and differentiation support. And finally, district 39 teachers will provide explicit instruction to students on the goal-setting process and why their student's developmental level, and engage each fall student in the goal-setting process, class, camp, or individual goals, and possible to this instruction.
I just want to make feedback about those items. I know that the board has taken their time to review the report over the weekend and has heard quite a bit already about all of these, or have been answering questions, or we can move on to Goal Two. As you're thinking, I'll also mention, you know, we have our MAP support teachers who are supporting this goal as well, not necessarily an action step, but certainly in addition that we will support the success this year. Okay, let's move on to Goal Two. I'll start with the first one. Goal Two is our, cultivate a supportive and inclusive learning community that is responsive to the social, emotional, and behavioral needs of our students. And our first action step is a continuation of last year's, in that we are going to have, each building has a school-based foundations behavior team, and they will be participating in eight days of training this year. They are already, every building worked over the summer on different strategies and ways to help teach our students how to behave appropriately in an identified common area, and they have been implementing since the start of the school year, all of the wonderful work they did over the summer. We're pretty excited about continuing this one.
All right. So that takes care of the first two action steps. The remainder are really about social-emotional learning and our integration of DEIB, or Diversity, Equity, Inclusion, and Belonging. As you'll recall, from the past few years, we've talked a lot about that belonging component. And so we added the B on DEI because it just made sense, really, and I think moving forward, that's, will continue to be a big focus, especially at 5'8", but beginning in the early grades as well. So this year, we're looking at continuing with our social-emotional curricular resources and that implementation. We did, our SEL team did do a revision of the objectives at each grade level over the summer to make sure that they were really in line with the competencies that we had identified, along with that DEIB component. And so there were some nuances with language that we included and some additional objectives that we included, and they really have been aligned now with our curriculum. However, at 5'8", we have been using responsive classroom lessons for responsive advisory meetings, which they're sort of a curriculum. They fall into areas, and they have objectives, and they're really targeted. But our teachers were asking for something more aligned, and so over the course of last year, we identified Wayfinder, which actually has a great focus on belonging specifically for 6th through 8th grades, and in 5th grade, it builds that foundation, and it really targets things at 5th grade that have been common issues for us, like conflict resolution and that sort of thing. So we have three teachers at each grade level piloting that curriculum, and we're looking at their input as far as scaling it up in the coming year. So that is underway. Number four is a new schedule for grades 5 through 8. As you know, we have had a scheduling committee going on from 5th through 8th grade with teacher representation across the board, and we are moving into the next phase of that. But one of the must-haves that that committee identified last year through our work was time set aside for social-emotional skill instruction. At High Crest, we have a daily homeroom, that's 18 minutes. By the time kids get in and attendance is taken and lunch count is done, it's about 10. And at the junior high, we have one day a week, that's a longer homeroom period, which is good, but oftentimes that gets taken for assemblies, or surveys, or other sorts of things that we need to do. So that scheduling committee is really looking at, how do we do a better job at setting aside that time for that social-emotional skill instruction, and those conversations that we know are really important, both to social-emotional and mental health, but also to our academic progress, because they are tied together. Number five is differentiated professional learning opportunities. So we, after all of our professional development, we asked teachers, what do you need more? Last year, it was really the basics, and now we're growing that and looking at, how do we embed social-emotional learning into our instruction, and how do we need to attack that in different ways for our staff? Number six is a reporting system to engage families. So as you'll recall, a couple of years ago, we had a CRC review that was based on social-emotional learning and communication with families, and so now that is growing, and we're digging into, really, how do we report social-emotional skill development to families via report card or some other reporting method? We have had in the past behaviors that promote learning based on second step, which has now been phased out, so we need to review those as a committee. Building base MTSS teams will implement aligned processes for Tier 2 and Tier 3 SEL problem solving. That is a result of another summer project, and so we will be doing work with our building teams and then, and then our schools as a whole for SEL problem solving. And finally, build staff capacity for DEIB through professional learning opportunities. And so we're looking at, how do we not only train staff in lessons or sharing that sort of thing, but how do we prepare staff for those conversations that might naturally arise as students share about themselves, as students learn about others, and do that in a natural and authentic and age-appropriate way?
Three is our professional community, focuses mostly on staff, the adults within our schools. And the first...
I'm sorry, about Goal Two. For DEIB, is the intention to also focus on low-income kids as well?
Yeah, socioeconomics is one of those diversities that we would look at, for sure.
I had a question. You may not be there yet, but for the specific SEL instruction you're trying to create time for on the 5'8" level, are you thinking daily, or are you not sure yet?
Really, best practice would be two to three times a week.
Okay. Okay, thank you.
And I'll add, I know the board is aware, but our scheduling team will be getting some support this year, as well as they try to refine their considerations and come to a final recommendation. So we're excited about that work that is ahead, so working with some really great people for that.
So I, this is not a question so much as acknowledgement and observation. I love talking about those two first goals. I'm sure you all have been, like me, hearing a lot about achievement, toxic achievement, sort of risk of kids from communities like ours, and for their mental health. So we're talking in goal number one about making sure that we set high, appropriate goals to achieve achievement, and I, you know, I really applaud the way you all have gone about that, and our vision, like, for this, and also being equally thoughtful, if it's in mind, that we are not, and I think about this as a board member, we're at the very top of approving what we're expecting to fit, and not wanting to set a model that is quite literally lower than, you know, you're in the top. So I just am thinking a lot about that, and I think that we are, we need, and so grateful for the priority of essential.
Thank you for acknowledging that. For me, I think that's really, really important, and it came out loud and clear on all of our strategic planning feedback sessions with our internal teams, with our external stakeholders, that both were very, very important, and I think it really is something special about WOME, and so staying true to that is important to us, and so thank you for your support of that.
All right, so Goal Three.
About balance, right?
Exactly.
So now we're going to talk about the adults within our school community. The first four are continuation action steps from the last year's plan, but they're valuable, and we know that we're gaining information, making progress with our larger goals as a result of these action steps, that we want to maintain, keeping the district advisory team, Strategic Advisory Team operational and kind of that circular feedback of, either ideas when you think about it, revise, change, and continue on with new ideas. That process, we know, is helping us as we make gains in our goals. We will continue to seek information from staff at key points within their career, whether it's within the 10-year period, or shortly thereafter, or even as they leave us, either for retirement, or for another place of employment. Getting that feedback to make sure that their experience is reflective of what we're aiming for and changing our practices if we need to reserve that feedback. We will continue to make sure that our committees have well-rounded experiences, we're hearing from different people at different stages within their career, but also through our different business, they want to know how the ideas that we're talking about, action steps we're creating, are impacting everyone within our school, making sure that the committees are made up of those diverse voices and perspectives. Making sure that there are opportunities for both staff, faculty, and administrators, all of us, to be able to voice our learning, our information, and our reporting. So those are action steps that we'll be continuing. Areas that we're going to be starting this year is to look at a new survey for targeting the needs of our professional environment within our schools. So you've heard us talk about essentials. We are looking at implementing a different survey. You've heard us talk about that. That will happen towards the end of this winter, but our work will turn well before that. As a committee, we'll be creating a committee to identify known needs and hopefully start setting a course of action to support that within each of our schools. In addition, we're looking at ways to engage our student services staff on having difficult conversations effectively and being able to facilitate those challenges. We're looking for opportunities for training and coaching to support staff in their skillset, and an opportunity for parents. And that's this week, I'd say, Pass 39 is kicking off the school year with an iTunes social, and we've engaged with a speaker to come and present on advocate the day, who are effective, who needs strategies for student needs, and what schools need in that conversation. So that will happen this week, certainly on the starting page. And then continuing our DEIB task force, it wasn't an action step last year, but it was something we're going to reach to the kids, and we're giving an action step this year. But this task force has a very specific focus, which is an end goal of making recommendations for attractive higher-teenager students, all kinds of their needs.
Do we want to talk about the surveys as well?
For Goal Four?
Yes.
Yeah. Tony, do you want to kick off Goal Four first?
Yeah, and then...
And then I'll talk about, yeah.
So for Goal Four, you just want me to start and then toward the end, Bill?
Yeah.
Okay, sure. So for Goal Four, we have, majority of our action steps are carryovers. We have one new one, and then we have one that moved down to Goal Four from a different goal area. So I'll just go ahead and start talking through some of these. As you know, we were looking at our district and school social media followings and interactions, and hoping to increase those more by the way of advertising. So Leo Kraus and I went through some social media consulting training on that and have worked through two different ways in which to increase our followers and our interactions through advertising, either by boosting posts, individual posts, or by through advertising campaigns. Both are within the Meta platform, seeing that our two most-used social media channels by our parents, both last year when we surveyed, and again, because we started the survey on Friday, are still Facebook and Instagram, both owned by Meta. So it makes sense then to focus our advertising that and otherwise. So our, making sure our kids were registered and enrolled for this school year, capturing not just the parents we know, but also the ones that may not currently be in our system, so those with younger kids. Our parent education events, starting to advertise those. And of course, this year, you'll start to see some posts just in general going to any of the residents in the, in our zip code, as well as the area in Glenview that we serve and Yon, so that the taxpayers who fund us feel as if they're getting a great bang for their buck, which they are. We just need to make sure they feel like they are, and that others in the North Shore also see that they are. So that's part of the reason why we're doing this. And then we might take existing communication avenues like the 39 Express and also send it out that way, just to be sure that people in the community are capturing those. Anyway, all that to be said, we've started doing that, and you'll see a lot more of that as you're looking through your feeds or Instagram reels or whatever, it'll show up there. The second action step we have is to, which we're continuing, is to redesign process for the district and school websites and the streamline information to those. We kind of did a soft launch with some of the templates. They're still getting worked on, there's still more work to do. However, what you may find now, if you go to our district website or school websites, is a little bit cleaner look. The quick links in the upper right-hand corner were not just randomly placed there. We looked at Google Analytics on our previous sites, what are people reaching most? We met, Leo and I met with the webmasters from the PTA's Nose to find out what our parents seem to be searching for the most. Just to let you know, that's the lunch menu. That came through very loud and clear, which is, you know, things we think are valuable, I will tell you right now overwhelmingly, as we met with them individually, the lunch menu is a thing out there. So obviously, if that's a thing, and that's where people are, why people are getting drawn to that, we need to make sure that the link to that is prominently displayed. And then, like, there's a little button there for jobs, because as positions become harder and harder to fill, we want to make sure that not only is it not buried, but it's also called something different. So instead of employment, it's just jobs. You go to any other place, that's what sometimes people are looking for. So there might be some change in the language. There's an accessibility widget, we pared down the headings, we reorganized some of the headings. The content work is still in progress, so meeting with the schools and the district departments to kind of peel back. We've already archived off some information. Anyway, that work is being done. So if you haven't checked in a while, please do. There's still some things that are in progress. Third action step was added in June, but implemented in August. So this was, before you knew it, it was here, and now it's completed. So there was, it came through that we needed some kind of online newsletter tool for our staff, just to help them and have some consistency for our families, give our staff, our teachers some analytics themselves. And in looking at some of those tools that are education-centric, like Canva or Smore, or looking at more of the corporate level, like Mailchimp or Constant Contact, we learned that a lot of our teachers were already using Smore, the ease of use, and the training component is just not really needed, and it does give analytics. So we just, rather than wait until halfway through the year when our staff were already used to using one type of tool, we just decided to do it. And so after doing some research, we did it, it's been an overwhelming success, not just from our teachers, but also from our parents. We have heard from our parents that it's been really nice. The online newsletters feel a little more interactive, our teachers can post videos, our teachers know what people are clicking on, they can be embedded into emails. So if your child's teacher sends a different type of newsletter this year, that's the reason why. So that's open for any staff member in the district that were using Smore. The fourth item is our transition. So you know that we've worked on transition planning from 4th to 5th grade in a previous year, and then now it's our time, and some adjustments were made for the 6th to 7th year, some tours, student ambassadors, making sure, that now is continuing. So I know Kate, and with support of Kelly as well, have really focused on some of the great things that have been happening in that 4th to 5th grade, bringing that to the 6th to 7th grade transition. So, and then I'll just mention one more, and then maybe Kelly can jump into anything related to transitioning, transition planning on that last bullet point, action step as well. The fifth one is the academic pathways. So that, the deliverable on that is a document, but I think it's a document that we know, the reason why it landed here is it's a needed document. So something that shows our parents that our courses connect, not just within our system, but possibly even with Nutria. So not that we have as many options as Nutria does, but it has been difficult at times for some of our parents to track why they've been, or their child's been placed in a certain class. So they, so it's clarifying for our parents, putting it into a document that would live on the website, so that one should be pretty easy to complete, is in progress, and should see that shortly. So I'll turn it over to Kelly, who's our other goal champion for Goal Four.
Yeah, and just going back to number four with the, using... Yeah, and just going back to number four with the, using parent surveys and feedback, we shared this with our team at DSAT, and also talked about how a fourth to fifth grade survey was going out. We had a long discussion just about the amount of surveys, and it kind of referenced back up to goal two, where we were talking about some of our KPIs that involve surveys. So there's the five essentials originally, that now we will be giving CSCI to students instead of five essentials, so those KPIs will have to adjust. And then also a survey that we gave to teachers last year that we'll have to do again, a strategic plan survey, where we coupled some of Heather's target areas with some of the goal two areas, as well with their understanding of how to implement social, emotional learning. So along the way, just the amount of surveys and tallying surveys came up as a concern from a community member who was, you know, like, hey, this is a lot, and it's actually a lot of work for you guys. So we will be thinking of, like, is there, are there better ways to do some of this? So maybe moving forward after this year, maybe we have, instead of surveys for the transition, we do focus groups, or something that's a little less survey-focused, and maybe there's a different way to gather information, or maybe it's consolidated for some of the CSCI for parents and students and staff, so that we don't need to give multiple surveys asking the same questions. So we'll be kind of looking at that. It's not an action step, but it's something in the back of our mind as we move on.
However, it could evolve into an action step under goal four, possibly for, you know, part of this year and maybe even next year. It might be a good one for us to take on in a larger scale, because survey fatigue is very real, and we all want to consume data for purposes such as this, but what it's doing on our parents, what it's doing on our teachers, are we getting a true sampling, as Kelly alluded to, with a focus group? Or are we just hearing the ones that really love it or the ones that really hate it? Like, what, because when we do a communications survey, like we did for the communications plan, we found out that overwhelmingly, our parents think we're doing a great job communicating. So, you know, it's like, so it makes you wonder, are we capturing a true sample of what we're doing? But what Kelly's alluding to, the survey fatigue, it's a real thing that we need to take on in, just in general.
Yeah, so we'll be looking for opportunities to consolidate some of that moving forward. The sixth one on here relates to goal two, about increasing parent and community communication about our commitment to DEIB. You know that for many years, we've had a statement of inclusion, we put it in our handbooks, we put it on our website, but we were noticing that people either don't know where to find it or don't know about it, and getting a lot of conversation about that. Also, as it connects to social, emotional learning, what do these competencies mean? What does DEIB mean? How is that addressed in the classroom, and so on and so forth? So this is a goal of ours in this area, because this goal is parent and family communication, basically. Goal two is more about teachers and students, so they work together. And if you have attended Curriculum Night, you'll see teachers are passing out our SEL objectives, we're talking more about it, we've included information in our administrator openings, and so we're really making a conscious effort to increase that communication and knowledge for everybody.
Are there any questions on goal four that Kelly or I can answer?
Corey's going to touch on goal five then.
Yep. Goal five focuses stewardship of resources. The action steps for goal five are very similar to what we've seen in prior years. Now that we're in the middle of this five-year plan, at least it relates to number one, the review, our twice-a-year review of our five-year capital improvement plan. Being in the middle now, if we look at the back half of whatever that plan might be, we'll get past the winter break and into the late winter and into the spring for sure, we'll start to want to have some conversations about what kind of project priorities might be for the back half of this plan. Then the other thing is step two, continuing to review a plan, prioritize those smaller school-based projects that we try to fit within our, within our summer schedule. The one challenge that we routinely see with these smaller projects that we really want to get done is how do they fit in with that bigger construction schedule and then that summer building use? Step three, as always, we're going to continue to monitor legislative adjustments. Out of Springfield, that touches on a wide variety of areas, anything from property taxes, mentioned cost shifts, it could be legislations from last year that we saw with the mandating all-day kindergarten starting in '27, '28. That was signed by the governor over the summer. So taking all those things and then rolling that into our five-year projections on an annual basis. And then the last item is just implementing a process to evaluate the class size and staffing patterns across non-homeroms at the 5'8" level. That is goal five, and we're happy to answer any questions.
Questions about, I will not just say to our team, thank you for being succinct in trying to review that, and for the community who might be listening, I know that the board has spent a lot of time hearing these updates and responding to our plans, so the lack of questions hopefully reflects that the board is feeling as though they're well-informed about what's being presented today, but we are happy to make any refinement to any of these action steps if there is any feedback before we present again at the Board of Education for final approval.
Well, it's interesting that you say that. We actually made a strong effort this year to be really focused in our goals. We found that last year's action steps were so verbose that there were times where we felt like maybe we took on too much or we weren't really clear about what we were trying to accomplish. So this year, all summer long, we really spent some time digging into what are we actually trying to do and how will we know if we accomplish it? So we hope that while it sounds like a whole lot that we're tackling, and it feels like that as well, we're really focused in making this third-year Russian teacher plan a really powerful and meaningful one for us, so.
This is Schneider Fabes, are we done with strategy?
Yes, we are.
Yes. I just want to say I appreciate that reflective process that you just went through. That's going to be really impactful, I think. All right, this is an opportunity for the public to address the board. Are there any community members that are present who wish to speak? Okay, seeing none, we will continue with the agenda. Is there any old business? I think I have one question on behalf of me and Bonnie. So this summer, you had said that the McKenzie Playground was going to get whatever, a ribbon cut or something, and you'd asked for a couple board members to go, and Bonnie and I, since we are the two former McKenzie Moms that are on the board, we were maybe gonna, not maybe, but we were planning on tapping into the younger versions of ourselves and showing up on the playground. Do you know when that is?
Let me confirm.
Okay. Okay, all right, thank you. Any other old business? Any new business? Having no further business, we need a motion to adjourn the committee of the whole meeting.
Motion to adjourn the committee of the whole meeting?
May I have a second?
Second.
Motion having been made and seconded, all those in favor of adjournment, please indicate by saying yea.
Yea, yea.
Motion carries by general consent, and the time is four o'clock. We are adjourned.